Call this meeting to order September second, two thousand and twenty five. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, good morning, everyone. We do have a quorum present this morning with all five commissioners in attendance. Commissioners, we did have a request to amend the agenda this morning to add in an executive session at the end of the meeting to discuss real estate. And if there are no questions with that, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Toman. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posnay. Motion's unanimous. First item of business this morning is county resident comments and concerns. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience or online that would like to address the governing body on any issues, now's the appropriate time. We give three minutes and the floor is now open. Morning. Please come to the podium and introduce yourself.
Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Michael Lewis Arthur Meyer. I'm an independent investigative journalist, resident of Sweetwater right now, Sweetwater County. Uh, my wife and I were here to set up disaster response plans, working with your churches and businesses. We've done disaster response in North Carolina after Helene hit. I was with the Major Michael Kennedy and the Fifth Battalion Marines during Hurricane Harvey. Uh, I've seen the devastating impact of how communities have been destroyed. Uh, and I'm not here to debate climate change. We're here specifically to talk about the stratospheric aerosol injections that are being sprayed in Wyoming skies. Um, and some people are saying solar radiation management. Some people are saying cloud seeding. I'm here to speak specifically about the Defense Agency Research Project DARPA and USAP, which is the United States Antarctica Project. This is utilizing HARP, NEXRADS, and cellular towers to emit EMF frequencies. The stratospheric aerosol injections, commonly known as chemtrails by the public, or not con trails, uh, we've released all the data. Um, I just want to let everyone know that I am one of two individuals who have filed non-consent against the Department of Defense. In March of this year, I was with the Oklahoma City FBI Agent Joshua Rich, the Joint Terrorism Task Force Detective McMillan. And we not only brought forward one of my sources, which is a researcher whistleblower, but we brought forth the data from the NEXRAD towers themselves. Those are Doppler radars. If you look up the way Helene was formed in the Gulf and sent up into Western North Carolina where our families were, and we were there, we saw the devastating impact right after that storm hit. It destroyed entire communities. Everyone that's on a low level watershed, if you're living on a river, the last storm that they hit in Texas had a twenty-eight foot surge within an hour, and then we had all those children that were drowned from the Christian camp. Now, I've been covering this for several years. I've been at multiple military bases. I brought out multiple whistleblower whistleblowers. If you look right now, our friends have released Climate Trails, which is a documentary that's explaining everything specifically that I've been letting city leaders across the nation know. Our goal here within the next month is to set up evacuation routes. You guys are in a very bad position if that damn north of this location busts. You have thirty minutes and this entire building's underwater with the rest of your town below it. Now, that's not me saying it. That's your risk management. And we were up at the mayor's office last week looking at the potential threat that this community would have. Thirty minutes isn't enough, but there are things that we've implemented in Swananoa, North Carolina, where we can utilize private property and public lands, working with private property owners to set evacuation routes that will take people up the hills. If we can evacuate the people, their pets, their horses, then they can come down and rebuild should a storm hit this area. I would ask you guys to take this very seriously because we have seen the bodies that were put in trailers. We have worked with rescue workers who have pulled limbs out of debris piles. And I'm talking, these storms don't discriminate against any political party, uh, old, young, rich, poor. I've seen it with my own eyes and it's devastating. Sweetwater itself and this area, you guys have a very bad situation should a storm hit and you have a surge. If you research the Defense DARPA program, you'll see that Pentagon, the Department of Defense, just got another trillion dollars from this administration to increase stratospheric aerosol injections. They built another HARP unit in the Arctic. Everything I'm saying is backed with whistleblowers. Some of our people have testified before Congress. And there's nothing that I'm talking about that I can't sit with any of you and provide. I'm not here to make people afraid of what the military is doing. I'm here to tell them, yes, the military is playing God with our weather. Yes, your skies are being poisoned. No legislation is going to stop them. You can ask Senator Don White, who we've worked with, and Tom Thillis in North Carolina. The federal government owns everything over four hundred, uh, four hundred feet above the skies. It's now FAA jurisdiction. So we can't beat this by legislation. We can't get this administration to declare a three-year moratorium. I was told by the, uh, Agent Joshua Rich had told me that the president will not give us a three-year moratorium on weather manipulation. They have trillions of dollars invested in this and the equipment, and they will continue poisoning the skies. Your soil is going to be high with aluminum, barium, strontium. They're using chemical agents, biological agents, fungi, human DNA nanoparticles that are dispersed in our atmospheres. And you guys have seen it, the crisscrossing in the skies. You know it's not natural. I want to do what we can to help your community prepare for the consequences should this administration continue to say that they will not declare a moratorium on these illegal programs. These are in violation of Title fifty subsection fifteen twenty A. By law, they should have stopped when we filed our complaints in March of twenty, this year, in March of twenty-five, but they're not going to. We can't get him pushed past Cash Patel and she won't, he won't forward it to Pam Bondi. They will not touch the military playing God with the weather, and they don't want people to be talking about it because then it makes us not trust our military. I'm trusting in you guys who are going to be leading this county. When we start implementing a disaster response plans, we want the county to work with us, to work with the businesses and churches we've already recruited. We've been doing extensive work across your county. We have a landing page put up that explains everything I've stated. Nothing I'm stating is inaccurate. And I am one of two cooperating victims with the FBI right now. But due to national security reasons and nondisclosure agreements, they won't do anything to stop the chemtrails. And the chemtrails are just part of the problem. Raytheon Lockheed Martin and General Dynamics have implemented directed energy weapons in civilian infrastructure that we are dependent upon. Be they your cellular phones or be their radar alerts for weather systems, those have EMF transmitters, and those transmitters are what is helping manipulate what they spray in the sky. I can explain the science for you clearly, and I'll be available if any of you would have any questions, but I ask you to take this seriously because our goal is to prepare your community for a devastating flood or wildfire started by directed energy weapons. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming over this morning. Let me follow up, Commissioners. Thanks for your time. Floor's still open if there's anyone else.
I'll be quick.
Morning, Mr. Treasure.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just a quick recap. Um, property tax bills will be hitting people's mailboxes today. Um, and just wanted to go over a few quick things on those property tax bills. Um, on the first page, there is a notice about the twenty-five percent property tax exemption that was automatic for everybody that owned residential property this year. That doesn't include mobile homes. So if you have residential property, that exemption is going to be automatic on your bill unless you qualified for the long-term homeowner's exemption. Um, on the back of the bill, we have a notice on there that next year, that twenty-five percent exemption you will have to apply for. Uh, and the dates on that, uh, open October first through February first. So if you do not apply for that, you will not automatically receive that twenty-five percent exemption. And then for the long-term homeowner's exemption, same thing as last year. Uh, if you did qualify for it this year, the legislature's office will send out a, um, an application to you again. Uh, application period for that is October first through May twenty-sixth. So just a couple of reminders on that, and if you have questions on the property tax bills when they come, feel free to call the treasurer's office. We'd be happy to help you.
Thanks, Treasure Callen. Appreciate that. Questions? Commissioner Slaughter?
Just one quick question, Mr. Chairman. Mark, um, on the long-term homeowner's exemption, it does sunset after the next period, isn't that correct?
That's correct. Two years. Yep. And the legislature has been feverishly talking about it in the revenue committee. They did have some discussion about that, so I'd be surprised if we don't see that extended.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate the reminder. Morning, Representative Brady.
Good morning. Um, Chairman, Board. I was just going to come up here. I wasn't even going to speak at all. I came in late. I was just going to, uh, speak on behalf of, uh, myself as a, uh, citizen of Sweetwater County, but since, and like I said, I came in a little late, but listening to this gentleman speak back here, uh, I just want to let you know that is one hundred percent correct. And anybody that is watching what's going on, it's obvious the material's out there. I encourage you all to, uh, investigate, research, uh, for yourself and encourage you to move forward on any way you can, as he suggested, to protect us. That's all I have.
Mr. Jones?
I have a question, Marlene. So you had mentioned that there's nothing legislation can do, but I know the legislature's working on potential bills or whatever may come out, but he says it's a waste of time, then is it a waste of time?
Well, my understanding, the approach is going to be, uh, regarding, addressing it as pollution aerosol and, um, yeah, aerosol pollution. And so hopefully that will take care of the upper level that, um, he's concerned about. That's FAA. So that's the way we're looking at it because I think, uh, that's got to be pollutants. So we want a safe environment and we want clean soil, as he said, clean water. Uh, we, our plants are, are dying. Our animals are being affected. We're being affected. So, um, that's the way I believe the, um, legislature is going to approach it is on that.
But I guess the question is, is that going to be effective because?
We're hoping so.
He says it won't be, then?
Well, if we're talking chemtrails and, uh, that may not be something we can, I, I'm not sure. My point is, is I'm taking, I kind of went away from that because to be able to get people to understand and onboard and be able to have something effective, I think the pollutant effect would be much more, the aspect of it much more effective. And aerosol spraying, which would take care of that problem. So does it negate the dangers that are out there with, uh, weather manipulation, et cetera, with DARPA, as like he was saying? So any other questions I can offer or answers?
Mr. Richardson.
Chairman.
Representative Brady, I, I just received a petition that had your name on it.
For what?
Asking for the, uh, removal of all property taxes in.
Oh, that's always been my position. Okay.
I'm not arguing that. I.
All right.
Like, if that's, if that's the direction that the Wyoming legislature wants.
Not, not dime fined as a person and I.
That's fantastic. What I, what I want to know is most of what we do here as Commissioners is, is delegated to us by the state legislature. We are a, a, a political subdivision of the state. Um, if we eliminate property taxes, and it didn't say personal property taxes, it said property taxes. That's, that's what funds the majority of what we do as a, as a county. What, what discussion are we having as we approach this on how to continue to provide those services? Because those services are like emergency management. They are services like our libraries or, or, or court houses. Um, if, if you want to eliminate that funding stream, I'm all, I'm all for it. But as conservatives, as elected leaders, we don't get to just cut off the faucet. We have to have a plan. And what's that plan going for?
Well, I'll just say, I have been involved with proper tax reduction even before I even ran for office. And when I signed that, I signed it as a citizen that pays the taxes. Um, but there's other rev- uh, revenue incoming. I don't know that right now is the proper time to, um, address this because I came up to speak for this kind gentleman. And, um, there's, you have lots of revenue coming in. It's my opinion that we could do without them. And there was a time, the whole country, for the longest time, functioned without them. So, uh, I can say that much, but again, I'd like to, when I do come up, I'd like to be able to come up and represent myself as a citizen and not have to drag in because I am both. But I'm glad you saw my petition signing. So, uh, yeah, and I will work toward, but as a legislator and as I can, as well as a citizen, I will continue to work towards a fifty percent tax, uh, exemption on our property. If it's possible to have a one hundred percent as a citizen, I will work toward that. But it obviously, it's the entire body of the whole legislature that will determine otherwise.
Well, I ask you because you're the one who represents.
Oh.
So.
Yeah, like I said, there's other, uh, income that, uh, revenue sources, like minerals and such. There's, I mean, property tax is what percent of your entire income, revenue?
Well, are we talking personal property tax or property tax? Because that petition specifically said property tax. And property tax includes a lot of industrial taxes that are a major portion of our.
Right, but I understand that. And perhaps that's what they're speaking about, but when people under, hear property tax and the people sign it, they don't have businesses. They have just their homes. So I would look at, have you look at it that way, that they're signing it on behalf of their private property, their homes.
I think words matter. And when, when the petition says property tax, that means all property tax. And if we're talking personal property tax, again, I'm all for it, but the minerals are paying the bills. And we have an entire electorate that you, you apparently are talking on behalf of that say they don't want to be a part of paying those bills. How are we going to then provide those services? You, you've said twice now, there's other revenue coming in. What revenue? What other revenue is, is there to replace this lot, this, this diverted revenue?
I'm not saying you're going to have incoming revenue to replace it. I'm just saying you have other revenue coming in. So my point is, when we did the, um, People's Initiative for fifty percent property tax exemption, that was on the homeowners. And even though it says property tax exemption in the language of the petition, it is homeowners. So this, one that's coming through to you, it can be understood as homeowners, but I can look into that again.
I believe the bill that Senator I'd had drafted referenced all property tax, not just, not just residential.
Okay, I'm, I would probably refer you to Senator I'd, but more specifically, but, but you know, prop, businesses need relief too. So that's. Any other question?
They also need their roads.
I know. It's, it's, I, I understand.
The dichotomy of local government.
Right. I hear the same.
We're expected to provide a lot of specific services, but we have to have the revenue to do that. I'm all, I'm open to the entire discussion, but we have to have the whole discussion. We can't just say, ah, there's too much revenue. We got to cut some of it. But that's what funds our museum and that's what funds our nine libraries. Does that mean we don't need nine libraries? We'll tell that to the folks out in Granger, that their little one-room library isn't important.
Yeah.
Tell, tell that to the.
I hear.
To the folks in McKinnon that have to have a library vehicle drive out to, to provide them with.
So did the local folks, then therefore otherwise go to a library? I, I, I don't.
I don't know either.
Okay.
That's the whole discussion, but I'm not hearing that discussion from the legislature. What I'm hearing from the legislature is we give local governments too much money. So I, what I, I want, what I want is the rest of that conversation of what, if you're going to, if you're going to provide less money to provide the services that you delegate to us, which services do you want us to cut?
That, it would be nice. Maybe you could, um, initiate a meeting with legislators and statewide county commissioners.
I would do that with the statewide county commissioners, but, uh, apparently there's a, an effort to ban that, so.
No, Commissioners can speak to Commissioners. I don't know what it is you're referring to.
We just can't have one of us represent, can't use our taxpayer money to enable those meetings? Is that?
Are you talking about associations?
Yes.
Okay, now we're getting to quite a few things. Again, uh, maybe we can discuss this at another time. I came up to support this gentleman in his comments. And now it's gotten into, how do we fill this? What about this? And what are we going to cut? Things can be cut. I can say that now, but I don't think now's the time to be discussing it. We can, and you don't need an association to meet with the legislators. Perhaps you can just designate one. Uh, and every county can designate one and pull in a Zoom call or bring them all, everybody in. There's no limit. I would suggest that if you're concerned about that, and if you haven't talked to Senator I'd yourself to see where his legislation may be going, then maybe that's what we ought to do. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Just.
Then Commissioner Richardson.
Just as a point of clarification, with respect to how much property taxes fund for our budget, it's not uncommon for the property taxes to fund over sixty percent of our budget. So i- if you eliminate property taxes, you're cutting sixty percent in a typical year. It can, it can vary significantly higher or significantly lower than that. But that's, that's a big hit that you're talking about removing from what the county's funding would be at that point in time.
Well, how much of that is residential?
How much of that is?
Is residential, uh, sixty percent?
No, residential is a very small part.
Okay.
Minerals is a very large part.
Yes, and that's what I'm.
But we're talking all, what we saw today was all property tax.
Okay.
Which, which once again, I think the Commissioners' point with respect to this.
Yes, I understand.
Is semantics matter with respect to these bills. If we're talking about the residential taxes, that's one thing. When you're talking all property taxes, it's a, it's a much different.
Yes, I understand. That's why I referenced the People's Initiative when it said twenty or fifty percent off all property taxes. In the paperwork, it, and we, people then understood it was for their home. So I don't know what Senator I'd has. I haven't read up on what his proposal is, but I'm just saying, I'll look into that more. Like I told, um, Commissioner Richards, I will look at that deeper and say, is it just the all property tax or homeowners property tax, which consumes a small part of your budget, as you say?
Thanks, Representative. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Anyone else who would like to address the governing body? Now, we'll go ahead and close the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda. That's going to move us to tab A, which is the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda this morning, Commissioners, there are ten items, first being the approval of the August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five special meeting minutes. Second is the approval of the August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting minutes. Third is the approval of the county vouchers, warrants, and expenditure approval listing along with the Commissioners' report. Fourth is the approval of bonds. Fifth, the approval of the abates and rebates. Sixth is the approval of the human services agreements. Seventh is a, a request to restaff a vacant position in the road and bridge department. Eight is a request to restaff a vacant position in the detention center. Nine is a request to ratify Amendment One to the Federal Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-five Community Services Block Grant Contract between Sweetwater County and Community Builders Incorporated. And lastly, item number ten is a request to ratify the CLG comments on the Bridger-Teton National Forest Giraffe Assessment. And at this time, Commissioners, I would ask if there's any requests to remove any items off of the consent agenda for further discussion. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay. Motion's unanimous. It's going to move us right along into Commissioner comments. And Commissioner Jones, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, on the nineteenth, uh, the MHSC, the Memorial Hospital, Sweetwater County Building and Grounds Committee meeting, uh, reported to me was progress on the lab expansion and the MLB renovations. Things are moving along nicely, so, uh, looking forward to having those projects done. Uh, my report will be brief, in part due to my wife and I taking a few days to ourselves. Uh, this is the first chance we've had this summer to spend a little time together and relax. The weekend of the twenty-fourth was our twenty-ninth anniversary. So we took a little time to celebrate. Uh, I'd like to thank my wife for putting up with me for twenty-nine years. I believe it's been twenty-nine years of paradise for her, but she may possibly tell a different story. The following week, I had numerous calls and conversations regarding topics such as the ambulance and the never-ending RMP. Uh, on the 27th, I attended the Board of Health Meeting. Normal reports were given there. Also on the 27th, attended the Memorial Hospital Sweetwater County Finance and Audit Committee Meeting. The hospitals work very hard on many topics such as quality and their finances. The finances are steadily improving. So it's good to see the fruits of their labors. They've, they've really come a long ways and they're doing some amazing things up there. Lastly, I'd like to wish my son Logan a happy birthday. A week early, he turns 24 on the 8th. He's currently driving with a friend from California to Florida. Their goal is to drive straight through. Must be good to be young. Love you, Logan. Drive safe.
Thanks Commissioner. Happy Annie. Any questions or comments for Commissioner Jones's report? Not, it looks like I'm next. Uh, somewhat short for me as well. Um, back on the 21st, Commissioner Richards and I met with Representatives from Castle Rock Ambulance. Um, CEO Bailey Doctor and CFO Todd Toolson, along with Mayor Mickelson from Rock Springs, uh, to discuss a little bit of the future of ambulance. Um, more or less, Castle Rock's getting ready to break ground on their ambulance bar over, barn over in Rock Springs. Um, they had some questions for the city of Rock Springs in regards to one of their budget items relative to ambulance service. Kind of asked us what we felt the future plans with ambulance may be. Obviously, there's been some discussions, some encouragement and some concern regarding uh, future funding for an ambulance service. There's a push to establish a improvement district for that. Um, whether or not that's the right move or not, I guess, is yet to be determined. We will be having upcoming conversations in that regard. But that's more of just being open and trying to plan for the future than, you know, trying to address it as an immediate need. We are still contracted with Castle Rock through the end of 2027, so. These are just conversations that we're trying to prepare for and plan in advance in the event that the, the district is what ultimately becomes about. Obviously, it'll need to go on the ballot, so. Um, if we go that route, we want to be prepared. We want to understand and have open discussions about what that will, will look like and what it'll take. And if we don't, then we'll go to Plan B, but I would anticipate some conversations probably on the next agenda. If not, the following, in regards to what that looks like, just as a potential option, so. Good discussion with them and services seem to continue to be going well in that realm. On the 26th, I met with the opioid committee with Commissioner Slaughter, Chief Deputy De Leon and County Grants Manager Christina Marshall. Uh, we had a teams meeting with Corona Insights. And they're finalizing the list of basically their community interviews that they'll be conducting throughout any of those affected, I guess, um, businesses that we would like to help address with some of that opioid funding. Kind of setting the steps, making sure we're all on the same page before the real work begins, so. Look forward to, forward to finally getting that one off the ground and hopefully bring back some valuable options to help uh, with that. Later that afternoon, at the Young at Heart Senior Citizens Board Meeting. They heard an update from their Director of Nursing, their Ho- Home Health Care Services Program. And they went over budget. They've had some difficulty with their budget as it sat going into that meeting. They were faced with a $220,000 deficit. Lots of kind of confusion on that process that they're aiming to get clarified. They've got, I believe, four new board members over the last couple of months. And so there's a lot of questions, which is good. And there's a lot of understanding that's trying to take place. I think they were gonna host a workshop to go over um, more budgeting issues a couple of days after that meeting I wasn't able to attend, but. I think there needs to be a little bit of education, perhaps some board training. Uh, there's a lot of good people there, both staff and board. It's just a matter of trying to get everyone understanding how that operation works and what's needed. And, you know, where they can, I guess, adjust and plan for the future, so. It turned out to be a pretty lengthy meeting. I don't think that was expected. Um, but honestly, quite a bit of confusion that needs to be, I guess, overcome and, and understood so they can continue to provide good services. But as with everything, if the funds aren't there, they have to shift and figure out how they're gonna make a go of it. So I'll be interested to see how that process comes about. Um, events complex was later that evening. However, they canceled it, so. I will try and catch up with them the end of this month. I did take a tour of the combined Public Works Facility. I think it was two weeks ago. Pretty impressive. That's gonna be a nice facility for the county uh, in regards to the engineering building and then the um, fleet mechanic building in the back. Uh, and I'll discuss it here in the Public Works Department Report, but if you get the chance, I encourage you to go take a walk through that, get ahold of Gene or probably Andy, and they can take you through, but it's still gonna be a pretty nice facility. I think the, the whole idea of that, although I've read that, you know, we're taking a little bit of flack for an unneeded facility, uh, once again is to combine resources. We've got various buildings that are, you know, whether it's in Green River, Rock Springs, or duplicated, or in need of, you know, upgrades, that the idea is to bring everything under one roof to streamline efficiencies and operations. And obviously, this facility will host more than just engineering and fleet. Um, it'll have road and bridge and parks and rec and facilities maintenance and um, the idea is to offload the facilities that will no longer be used or needed. And so, um, it's definitely worthwhile to take a walk through and hopefully we can get that wrapped up in the next month or so and put it to use. So appreciate all those trades and staff for their forward thinking in that regard. Lastly, I'll share the Public Works Department Report. In the Buildings Department, the C Street Library Meeting Room remodel is progressing very well. And they should be completed in the next couple of months. The Sweetwater County Library Green River, Green River Meeting Room remodel is complete. There's a ribbon cutting and open house on September 11th at 5:00 PM. The White Mountain Library Project is ongoing. Progress is slow. However, during our meeting last week, the contractor presented a schedule that showed how they were going to keep on track and try to make up lost time. Southwest Counseling Jonah Modular is almost complete, except for some minor items remaining. The exterior parking lot and concrete work are scheduled to be completed in early September. Southwest Counseling's Washeki Home is complete. The Southwest Counseling Ankeny Facility reached substantial completion on August 15th. We only have the punch list items remaining, and Southwest Counseling is in the process of occupying the entire space. The Southwest Counseling Duran Home Project is also complete. Sweetwater County Combined Facility is progressing. The front building, which is the engineering building, has almost reached substantial completion with only minor things to be corrected. And the back building, fleet maintenance, is progressing well with all of the trades finishing up their items. Cleaning is progressing and Groot House Construction is hopeful everything will be completed in the next few weeks. We'll receive the 95% design plans for the White Mountain Library HVAC upgrade later this week. The Detention Center rooftop unit and air handler unit upgrade hit a milestone last week with all 18 of the rooftop units being set. All but two of the units are fully operational and the other two will be fully operational by the middle of this week. The makeup air unit is set and running with some minor tweaks that need to be completed this week. Safety railing is being installed and should be finished by the end of this week. The air handlers are scheduled to arrive on site September 8th. And the maintenance crew handled 71 work order requests in the month of July. And road and bridge, crews are grading roadside ditches from some of the recent rain events, cleaning cattle guards and fixing delineators. Crews have been very busy asphalt patching various roads around Sweetwater County. In the Engineering Department, County Road 15 nine-mile reconstruction project is complete, except for the seating and punch list items. The culvert lining project on County Road 101, First and Second North is complete, and that project went well. Staff has started advertising for the Roosevelt School Concrete Valley Gutter and Asphalt Patching Project that was approved by the Board of County Commissioners and is in the 2026 Capitol Budget. We're working with Trout Unlimited on the Ramsey Ranch Culvert County Road 24, and this will hopefully be installed later in the fall. And in Parks and Recreation, crews are continuing to work on mowing and keeping the parks clean. They also started installing the netting at Crossroads Park, which is needed to prevent from soccer balls traveling onto the desert. There's some pictures in that report that was emailed to you by Gene, going over all those projects mentioned. But certainly a busy summer for Sweetwater County. Um, with that, I believe that's primarily it. Commissioners, have some upcoming meetings. Obviously, we'll have the official grand opening and ceremony for the airport on the 12th. And I look forward to finally being done with that project. I'm sure Devin does too. I've been invited to attend the Idaho National Laboratory uh, facility on the 15th, which would be the day before our next meeting. And should be a late return that evening, so if I'm dragging a little bit the next day, bear with me. But uh, with that, I'd pause and stand for any questions you all may have. Knock, Mr. Slaughter, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the 19th, the Capitol Committee met to address the budget concerns that the County Commission had raised. Uh, Clerk Lane and Accountant Rebecca Romero presented a plan to extend the budget period that ne- next, for next year to help mitigate the problems we experienced the last couple of years. I don't think that extending the timeframe resolves the problem. We discussed that a little bit further in that meeting. Um, other discussions centered on better communication between departments in the months leading up to the budget process. I think other ideas need to be explored and further review of the issues at hand uh, be more succinctly identified. Um, and we work towards a common goal with respect to that in the near future. On the 20th, I attended the regular monthly meeting of the Sweetwater County Museum Board. Not a lot of new information there. The staff has been working on Museum Integrated Management Plan and making updates. They're reviewing their collections management policy. They're working on a new webpage that will modernize their current webpage. A couple of days after the meeting, David Meade informed me that Curator Amanda Benson has accepted a new job out of state and will be leaving at the end of the month. Amanda seemed to be an excellent employee and will surely be missed. On the 21st, I attended the Coalition of Local Governments meeting in, in Lyman. Commissioner Tolman was also in attendance. And as I generally report first and steal her thunder, I'll leave the rest of the report on this meeting to her. On the 22nd, I spent the morning working on several issues for the Specific Purpose Tax Joint Powers Board. On the 26th, I attended the opioid meeting referred to by Chairman West. Corona Insights continues to put together information on the needs assessment we can contracted with, for them. They seem to be progressing well. It's a slow process, but hopefully we're making strides in the right direction and will be able to use some of the settlement funding to mitigate the effects that opioids have wrought on our population. On the 28th, I met with Land Use Director Bingham and Deputy Attorney De Leon. We had a great conversation and they brought me up to speed on several land use and planning issues, along with new information on direction for the Rock Springs RMP and industrial siding updates. Over the course of the last two weeks, I've also followed up with most of the principles of the Wyoming Candy Commissioners Association Congressional Tour. And I've heard nothing but positive things about our participation in the project. Hopefully, the information we provided and the exposure we gave to Sweetwater County will have a long-lasting and positive effect on the decisions made in Washington DC for years to come. I was able to spend the long weekend with family, both scouting and hunting, and was once again able to make some memories that hopefully will last in my family's minds for their lifetimes. The rest of this week will be spent preparing for next week's Specific Purpose Tax Joint Powers Board meeting Monday. Friday, I also have the final review of the County Commissioners Association Congressional Tour. Interested to see how the other counties felt it was received. Then it's back to my regular liaisons duties. Just one thing that happened late yesterday, Mr. Chairman. Um, while I was on a mule deer scout, kind of interesting, I received a text um, from participants who were at Crossroads Park for the steelworkers um, picnic, which was going on at that point in time. Apparently, there was not power out at Crossroads for that um, picnic. And as part of our facilities use agreement, um, it was stipulated that there wouldn't be uh, power provided and that anyone who was going to be out there would have to provide power. I was able to, I, I wasn't aware of the facilities use agreement at the time. I was able to get a text to uh, Public Works Director Legursky. And I also was able to physically, or by phone contact Chris Bradford, who said that he would go out and get power for them. Subsequently, um, I did receive an email late last night from Public Works Director Legursky with our um, facilities use document that had been signed showing that uh, we would not necessarily provide power. But um, letting me know that they did send a person out and to get the power out there. So I appreciate the fact that on short notice, on, on a holiday, we were able to do that. I'm just a little bit concerned with our facilities use agreements. I think for situations like that, I would think it would be a benefit to our constituencies um, to, to have power for those types of things. I understand, um, I, I saw some of the reasons why we have declined having power out there um, with these agreements. But I think maybe we need to look at some of these agreements to try and make them a little bit more friendly towards um, the, the people of the county who are using our facilities. Um, so just, just a thought. And once again, you know, really appreciate what, what was done with the department. Also want to make a statement, you know, over the last week, I spent a lot of time out on county roads. And even though we've had very little rain and there has been a lot of traffic on all of the roads, you know, they have held up very well. Um, and most of our county roads that I was on over the last week are in very good shape, so. Kudos to the Department, Road and Bridge Department for doing that. I think they do an excellent job on our roads. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would submit for any questions.
Thanks Commissioner. Any comments, questions for Commissioner Slaughter's report?
Yes, I didn't bring my notes on CLG because I was sure you would cover them.
Oh, I have them, so.
Maybe you better hit a couple of high points. I didn't bring mine with me.
All right, let me real quick.
Sorry.
Pull them up.
They're pretty standard. We cover everything under the sun that deals with federal.
Yeah, I had a couple pages, so. Oh, here we go.
Sorry.
Uh, basically, um, we talked about um, Rocky Mountain Power, um, as the first thing that we talked about, and the coal industry. We received information that Naughton and two other coal plants are set to never retire now. Uh, which I thought was kind of an interesting concept, and that was brought forth um, by one of the other commissioners. Um, Danielle Betancourt, our attorney, um, stated that on the RMP application to convert Naughton units 1 and 2 from, uh, that they're going to do that from coal to natural gas. Even though we had just received information that those coal plants were not going to ever shut down. So thought that was very interesting. Um, they've finished the draft environmental impact statement for TerraPower. FERC is scope, doing scoping on Kemmer Horsepower Replacement Project. Um, there are 257 more acres of disturbance for Black Butte. The 2026 first quarter oil and gas lease sales, they, there were 36 parcels which were released in Sweetwater County, which is a big change. It's nice to see that we're doing some more leasing for oil and gas here. So hopefully, we will see some more um, movement in the oil and gas industry, which obviously has helped finance our budget, which has been a topic of conversation already this morning for uh, many, many years. Um, we talked about the Dry Piney Helium and Carbon Sequestration Project, Wild Horse RMP amendments. The decision on it was reversed on the wild horses and has been remanded to determine an appropriate remedy for the Wild Horse Project. Um, so that's delaying the removal of horses on our checkerboard at this point in time. There were 1,677 horses removed between July 15th and August 2nd in Adobe Town. We still have not gotten cooperator status with Bridger-Teton, which is, once again, a kind of a sore subject for us. Uh, we have a lot of residents who live in that area and a lot of people who recreate there will feel like we should be a participator in that. That is a brief overview of the major things that we talked about at that point in time. So I will amend my report to add that and hope that that helped Commissioner Tolman out.
Thank you.
Any other questions or follow-up? I'll just add on the parks. I mean, I served on the Parks and Rec Board when it was still a board before it came under the county's wing. And I, I understand where you're coming from. It's one of those situations where, you know, one person ruins it for all. What we had back at that time, which was over a decade ago, was people that were tripping the breakers. They would have an event or a.
the breakers. They would have an event or a wedding or whatever the situation was. They'd plug in four or five crock pots, blow the breaker. They'd have to call staff. They'd have to come out, you know, the whole process with that. There was one example where it was only, I believe, a 15 amp outlet, an individual tried to rewire it and put a 20 in. I mean, I could go on and on with stories, and as unfortunate as that is, that is where it became noted in the facility use agreement, which was signed and obviously not read. Could there be exceptions to that? You know, maybe, maybe that's something that needs to be discussed before that's signed, so we can try and make those accommodations. But at the same time, I think that's kind of unfortunate that, on both ends, you know, we have to call staff out on a holiday weekend to go trip power to something that was agreed and noted that it wouldn't be on. So is there the perfect world? Probably not. But you know, we have a hard time keeping up with people vandalizing the parks as it is, and you know, I I hear you, but that's the purpose of the agreement, no different than we've seen in other sporting venues that utilize the parks. I just think that it goes both ways, and why we can probably give little on some, I think it's asking a lot to create an issue out of something that you had already agreed to, you know what I mean? So I hear you, but that's some of the reasoning behind why that came about. So whatever that's worth. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Tolman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner Slaughter. I didn't want to steal your thunder, so I'm glad you filled in. On the Coalition of Local Governments, to the legislature, I would just say I do not want to see an income tax, and manna is not going to fall from the sky to fill in the gaps that we are used to receiving all of the funding for our services. So it is, it is serious. If our legislators don't do their homework, we're going to be in a big crisis. It will be a crisis. On the 25th, I attended via the phone the Sweetwater Combined Communications Center meeting. They handled 1,429 calls last month. On the 25th, I met with Natasha Holtmeyer, 4-H Extension Director, and had a discussion on her duties and expectations. On the 26th, I met with Golden Our Senior Center Board. They did an impressive financial review, and I think they're in pretty good financial position. They have new board members, four new board members. They also elected officers Kathy McCormick, Vice Chairman Vivian Chen, and Treasurer John Freeman. On the 27th, I attended a two-hour, oh, it's actually almost three-hour, Threat Assessment Workshop at the Sheriff's Training Center. And so just to our speakers back there, you might contact Jesse Moreno, who is our Emergency Management Specialist. They have to do federal threat assessments. They have to go through different scenarios in order to get federal funding. And so we do have disaster plans in place, and we do, they do mock exercises every year, different scenarios. So it's not that we don't have those things in place because we have a pretty thorough program. On the 8th of September, we will meet again at 11:00 AM to finish the threat assessment process. On the 28th, I also attended the Fontanel Working Group meeting that was held at Ciscity National Wildlife Refuge. Updates on the Green River Water. We were at 106% of moisture in February and March, then it went to 19% for the balance of the season with record-breaking dryness. June was in the top 10% for the highest temperature since 1895. So the lowest they will take the river flows out of Fontanel are 800 CFS to protect the fish in the river. They will do that all winter. Then in April, when they do the power plant shutdown, they will go to 825 CFS, and then we will see what the spring and winter brings us, or snow. Labor Day weekend, I labored the whole weekend at the farm with the big old irrigation project and lightning strike on the other pivot. So I labored. I did not vacation. Today, I returned a call to Tori DeGarden at Senator Brasso's DC office regarding the Rock Springs Bureau of Land Management Resource Management Plan. She met with Kimberly Foster two weeks ago, the local field manager at the BLM, and was told that the BLM office is waiting on signatures from DC so they can proceed with the amendment process on the resource management plan. There is no nominee for national or state BLM director, but several names have been sent to the president's office. So hopefully, things will start moving, and we'll get a congressional approval for a BLM director so that that process can get moving. Special thanks to Hannah Romero of the Green River Star for the great article about the Congressional Tour we hosted earlier this month. And on the 11th is our Green River Library ribbon cutting on the remodel at 5:00 PM. Next CLG meeting is September 18th, and the usual other meetings. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Questions or comments for Commissioner Tolman's report? Notch, Commissioner Richards, your bat and cleanup today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. It's my turn to be repetitive, so I hope you'll bear with me. I had a light couple of weeks, so I shouldn't take up too much of your time this morning. After our meeting on the 19th, I attended an SEDC meeting where we discussed our path forward as an organization. For the near future, we're going to try to conserve the money that's available to us, look for ways to raise more money, and do some community outreach as we continue to plan our reorganization. On the 20th, I attended the Airport Board meeting. As they were leading up to the official opening of the new terminal, they were seeing consistent growth in their revenues in most areas, and with the new terminal officially open as of August 27, those numbers should just keep getting better. If you haven't made time to go out and see it, I encourage you to do so. There's an area on the public side where you can go watch planes land and take off, and I think you'll be impressed with what they've done. Just as another repetitive reminder, the official grand opening ceremony is going to be on September 12th at 2:00 PM, and the public is invited. So I hope there's a huge turnout to celebrate the culmination of years of planning and challenges and the massive investment in our community. On the 21st, I joined Chairman West along with Mayor Mickelson, as well as staff from the Castle Rock Hospital District, for a meeting to discuss the future of ambulance service in our community. It was a good discussion, and we are starting to look at ideas how to continue ambulance service in the future. There is only two and a half years left on the current contract with Castle Rock, and that might seem like a long time, but it'll be gone before we know it. I want to remind everyone that our current contract commits the county to up to 1.6 million in annual subsidy in return for what I guess I'll call minimum viable ambulance service to the community. I'd also like to point out that the county is right now picking up 100% of that tab despite the vast majority of the services being provided in the municipalities. On the 22nd, I attended the Memorial Hospital Foundation's Casino Night. It was a fun event, well-attended, and raised money for a good cause. On the 25th, I went to Pinedale where I joined Sublet County Commissioner Dave Stevens, along with Game and Fish Commissioner Ken Roberts, as well as a couple of Game and Fish biologists and other Game and Fish staff for a tour of several choke points in the identified antelope migration corridors. I put some handouts out there in front of you that included the maps of both mule deer corridors and the antelope corridors. I believe the Game and Fish Commission will be addressing designation of the antelope corridors in the near future. Currently, they're identified under the Governor's Executive Order Designation is a little stronger term. One of those maps in front of you shows all the identified choke points in the antelope corridor. One of those is in Sweetwater County, which is why I was invited up there, as you were all were too. So during the tour, we drove with the biologists to several of the locations, and just one interesting story. We got, one of the choke points is on private land up there, and a designation would have changed that, but the private landowner has invested a lot of money to protect that choke point on his property and make sure antelope have a chance to go through. So we went up there, and the ranch manager met us up there, and the Game and Fish warden met us up there and opened the gate. And he was sitting in a side-by-side by the gate when he opened, when we pulled up and he got out and opened it. And then when we drove a couple more miles to where we met and got out of the trucks where we were going to have lunch, and there's great big grizzly bear tracks going right down the middle of the two-track where we had lunch. And the warden said, yeah, he was standing by that gate while I was waiting for you all to show up, and I wasn't going to get out of the side-by-side until you guys showed up. And just as we showed up, he headed off into the willows. So it was a fun, almost encounter with a grizzly bear. On the 26th, I attended the Southwest Counseling Board meeting, which was preceded by about an hour of board training from their council, who gave them a nuts-and-bolts refresher on the Administrative Procedures Act, as well as an update on how Wyoming's new concealed carry statutes affect their organization. It creates a big deal when you're dealing with mental health. The way the statute reads is a government official can't attempt to prohibit the lawful concealed carry of a weapon into a government building. There is a carve-out in that statute that basically says the residential treatment centers, you can't have weapons in, so it allows for that. So they have to be really careful in determining what is a residential treatment center, what is not, and making sure that the public's rights are protected in both areas. Notable action they took during their meeting was to pass a resolution officially asking the county to explore the feasibility of providing capital maintenance, IT support, and fleet management for their organization, with the hope that it could ultimately provide savings for both of our organizations. So that's a discussion we're going to have to have as a group going forward to find out if that works. We'll have to bring Tim into that and Gene into that conversation. After that, I hooked up a camper and pulled it up to Cliff Creek for the holiday weekend, where it blessedly rained for a couple of days. So good news for those firefighters up there. It wasn't enough rain to put out that big fire, but it did give them a couple of days of relief. Speaking of the holiday weekend, I hope everyone had a safe and happy Labor Day weekend. Going forward, this afternoon, I'll meet with Chief Deputy County Attorney De Leone and Land Use Director Bingham about strategy for the Dry Piney MOU meeting that Sublet County has finally scheduled for tomorrow. The deadline for adopting the MOU was last week, but apparently the Industrial Siding Division is giving them some leeway. There still seems to be a lot of confusion about how this is all going to work, since Sublet technically doesn't qualify to receive impact assistance funds, and won't unless they pass a fifth penny tax between now and when the project construction starts. So I think the lawyers are going to be busy trying to craft an MOU that'll work. In the meantime, I just wanted to make sure once again that everybody is okay with giving me the authority to negotiate that MOU on behalf of the VOCC. John, do you think we need a motion for that, or will it matter until we have a signature page?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Richards, I think it would be valuable to have a motion to allow you to sign, because that will be you or the chairman to sign that MOU as it could be. I don't know for sure how that leeway was given. I know it's there. Technically, it is. I think that she will be okay with receiving notice from that an agreement is made. But I, so I think it's still valuable, however, to be able to sign that if it comes down the pike.
Chairman, can I ask you to facilitate that?
Sure can. What are they calling that, the official title of that?
Dry Piney MOU.
I know we took action a couple of meetings ago to, I think that was to authorize you to head that process up, but I don't think it included negotiating or signing the MOU. So I would entertain a motion to authorize Commissioner Richards to negotiate and sign at the Dry Piney MOU contract as discussed.
So moved.
Motion back, Mr. Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tolman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion's unanimous.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Also, this afternoon, I'll be joining Chairman West in a meeting with board members of the Clearview Improvement District to discuss some of their plans. Tomorrow is the Dry Piney MOU meeting in Pinedale. On Thursday morning is the Enterprise Meeting at the hospital. Friday morning will be our first Friday's federal partners meeting, and then later that morning is a Congressional Tour recap meeting with the Wyoming County Commissioners Association. On September 11th, I plan to attend the ribbon cutting for the new meeting room at the Sweetwater County Library here in Green River. That's a project that started back when I was liaison to the libraries, and it'll be great to see that first meeting room open. That's going to be at 5:00 PM, and I encourage everyone, the public included, to attend. Then on the 12th, of course, is the grand opening of the new airport terminal. That happens at 2:00 PM. Then finally, on the 15th, along with others, I've been invited back to the Idaho National Laboratory for another tour. As I've said before, the nuclear supply chain is in Wyoming's future, and it's up to us to decide whether we have our hand at the wheel when it rolls through, or if it just runs over us. I'm committed to being as educated as possible about all parts of the industry, because I think we are much better off if we're driving the train. I think that's all I have for you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate the report. Any questions or comments for Commissioner Richards? The only correction I would make, I think you said 1.6 for Cal-Sa Rock on ambulance, and we're locked in at 1.8.
1.8.
But operating under that. All right. Well, nice work, Commissioners, as always. Busy times, and that is going to conclude the Commissioner comments portion of the agenda. So everyone good? Felt a little bit behind schedule, but not too bad. Keep marching forward for a break. It's going to move us right along to Tab B, which is the Action and Presentation Items. The first item up under Tab B is the Approval of Amendment 1 to the Federal Fiscal Year 2025 TANF CPI Grant Contract and Subcontract. TANF is the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families Community Partnership Initiative. And joining us this morning is County Grants Manager Christina Marshall. Good morning to you.
Good morning. So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is my first agenda item. Sweetwater County was awarded an additional $50,000 to its Federal Fiscal Year 2025 TANF CPI Grant Award from the Wyoming Department of Health, or Department of Family Services this time. There is no required cash match, and the additional funding must be expended by September 30th, 2026. So the original grant contract was approved by the County Commission on August 6th of 2024. So the grant funding is designed to help needy families with children who are at 185% of the federal poverty level. Projects must address at least one of the following purposes: provide assistance so that children can be cared for in their own home, reduce the dependency of needy parents by promoting job preparation, work, and marriage, prevent and reduce the incidence of out-of-wedlock pregnancies, and finally, encourage the formation and maintenance of two-parent families. The funding will be passed through to CLIME Wyoming to assist low-income mothers and families. CLIME participants enter the program making an average wage of $18,156 a year, and have two children, and approximately 60% have children under the age of five. So post-program graduates are employed and making an average of $35,004 a year. CLIME also embeds mental health services within its job training program. So the original grant award was $50,000. This amendment is $50,000 for a total award of $100,000. Services provided under this grant are limited to Wyoming residents, US citizens, or legal permanent residents, households with at least one dependent child. And finally, this amendment was included in the county's fiscal year 2026 grant projects budget. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Christina. Detailed as always. Any questions for Amendment 1, Commissioners? Not an entertain a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign Amendment 1 to the Federal Fiscal Year 2025 TANF CPI Grant Contract and Subcontract with CLIME Wyoming as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Are you none of those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 2 under Tab B is the Approval of Amendment 1 to the Contract for the Regional Emergency Response Team Number Four. Joining us again is Christina Marshall and Under Sheriff Joe Tomich. Good morning to you both.
So this is my final. So this is my final item. So Sweetwater County was awarded an additional $1,200 to its state grant award being overseen by the Wyoming Office of Homeland Security. It requires no cash match and expires on June 30th of 2026. The original contract was approved by the County Commission on March 4th of this year. The award is being used to purchase critical equipment for the Sweetwater County Bomb Squad under the Regional Emergency Response Team, or RERT, Number 4, which is overseen by the County Sheriff's Office. Amendment 1 funding will cover a shortfall for the purchase of ballistic vests and helmets that was identified in the procurement process. So the total award was originally $244,113.41, with Amendment 1 of $1,200, the total award will be $245,313.41. Some final notes. While this specific amendment was not included in the county's fiscal year 2026 grant projects budget, staff anticipates the amount will be covered by delayed projects that will not expend their total funding this year, so budget amendment is not needed. I've attached Amendment 1 as well as the original contract. I'm happy to answer any questions, but the real project manager is the under sheriff who's here as well.
Very good. Pretty straightforward. Thanks again. Any questions on this amendment, Commissioners? Not an entertain a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign Amendment 1 to the Contract for the Regional Emergency Response Team Number 4 as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it, John. Can move us to item number 3, which is the Verizon Wireless First Amendment to the Land Lease Agreement. We've got Public Works Director Gene Legursky and County Chief Deputy County Attorney John DeLeon. I believe we postponed this at our last meeting, so we're bringing it back. Good morning, Gene.
Morning. Yeah, it was postponed at the last meeting due to some conditions in the contract that were raised by everyone up there. John got on the phone right away and addressed those with their attorney, and what you see before you is the fruits of the labor on that, so.
Questions or comments on the lease agreement? Did you want to add anything, John, or?
Just pursuant to Commissioner Richards' just concern about the non-compete clause that was removed, so the contract is the same with that having been removed.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Trying to remember if this was all of us or just one signature. Looks like just me. I'd entertain a motion to approve the First Amendment to the Land Lease Agreement with Verizon Wireless and authorize the chairman to sign as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks for your work on that, John. Let's get move us to item number 4, which is the SAMSSARAH Fleet Tracking Software Renewal. Gene emailed us a slight amendment to what's in your packet this morning, which was a little bit of some clarity on the confidentiality clause, and I'll hand it back to you, Gene.
Yeah, what this is for is for a three-year renewal for our vehicle fleet tracking software. This is how we, I don't want to say monitor, because everybody freaks out when you do that, but this is how we can find out if people are heading home. It's also come in handy when you guys are talking and say, hey, nobody's been on this road for X number of days or years or whatever, and I can pull up that and say, no, we were on it here and there. It's been essential in crash investigations. It's amazing the amount of data that you can pull out of it. We had a couple wrecks earlier this, well, late last winter, where we could see that the person was traveling 25 miles an hour. You know, speed limit's 55 on the road. They were actually doing 25. They came up on the bridge, tapped the brakes, and you can actually see the G-force change and then hit the guardrail right there. It's amazing, you know, so you can actually go back and recreate that a lot easier. I think it's an invaluable tool for many, many things. It's amazing how accurate SAMSSARAH is. That's one of the reasons when we looked at this three-plus years ago, you know, we tried six different things. They sent out all kinds of different things. Almost everybody has these now, and we relied on SAMSSARAH because it does repeat every six seconds. So you get real-time data when you can. Two years ago, three years ago, whenever the last bad winter was, that's how we rescued people. We knew where our blade operators were. I could tell you that one night when we were in the EOC and we're trying to get to a contract worker out in Wamsetter, we could watch our blades work back and forth, work back and forth, and we could tell exactly where they were. I can also tell you that from the Loves to the Water Tower in Wamsetter, if you've ever driven by that, it took three hours to get there. So you can imagine how bad the snow was in that area. And all this was a notification of confidentiality. They had a confidentiality clause in there. John picked up, didn't like. Of course, being a governmental agency, we have to go by all the state statutes and rules and, you know, the thing. It puts a little bit of onus back on me that if anybody wants to see this contract, I have to let them know. It's really all what this does. So I think it's a great software. It also has a non-appropriation clause in there. So if you guys decide not to renew this next year, we get another three-year contract. And currently, this year's is under the 26 cap projects.
Thanks, Gene. Appreciate that. Questions on the software renewal, Commissioners? I will say, I was there during that EOC event with that winter storm, and it was pretty incredible. I mean, you can dial it in by who drives, you know, what plow or what motor grader, and we're able to see, I mean, the back and forth movement of trying to get through some of those drifts, and that would have been pretty difficult to direct, you know, people from the sheriff's office and response to get there without knowing the exacts of that. So I was a believer in that. I understand the whole Big Brother concept. In my other hat, we have it too for various reasons that you've described, but it even takes it, you know, a step further than that with idle times and, you know, wasting fuel and what have you. So pretty impressive, but in emergency response, that was, that was pretty clutch, so. There's no other questions or comments, and entertain a motion to approve the SAMSSARAH Fleet Tracking Software Renewal and allow the chairman to sign all necessary documents.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 5 is the County Vehicle Bid Award, and we will hand it back to Gene.
So Marty gave me direct instructions and not bought this. She has a reputation to uphold in front of you guys, being clear and concise, so I'll try my best. Anyway, last Monday, we had five total separate bids for various vehicles that were approved underneath the Capitol Projects List. We bid Chevy Tahoe, well, I'll just go through them. We bid one Chevy like Tahoe. It was actually a Chevy Tahoe from Fremont GMC out of Riverton. Dodge Durango like, we had three of those from Lander. One Ford Escape, a cargo van for facility maintenance, and a crew, four crew cab pickups for Roden Bridge. All those, and you could see Marty's thing, total award for Fremont Chevrolet GMC out of Riverton is $55,691, and total award for Fremont Motors of Lander is $400,804.50. And the breakdown for the sheriff's facility in Roden Bridge is below that. If you wanted to get more details, she included all of the actual total bids, deliveries. Be amazed at the deliveries. They're still 16 to 52 weeks out, just depending on when we land in different things. So hopefully, we'll get them. One reminder is on all the sheriff's stuff, they will have to be sent in for outfits, so you guys will see another bid for the outfit packages on those.
Thanks, Gene. I realize you're filling in. I believe these were all within budget.
Correct. They were all, they were actually all within budget. Actually, all of them were actually lower than what we projected with the budget.
Any questions on these vehicle awards, Commissioners? We'll take them one by one, just for, I guess, cleanliness on it. The first, we've got Bid 26-01SD, which is one full-size four-wheel drive, all-wheel-drive utility police package. And I would entertain a motion to approve that award to Fremont Chevrolet GMC out of Riverton for a 2026 Chevy Tahoe in the amount of $55,691.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous. Next is Bid 26-02SD for three sport-sized utility police package pursuit rated. And we've got, I guess I would entertain a motion to award that to Fremont Motors Lander for three 2026 Durango Pursuits in the total amount of $119,556.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous. The third award is Bid Number 26-03SD for one sport-sized four-door, four-wheel-drive, all-wheel-drive utility vehicle. And I would entertain a motion to award that to Fremont Motors Lander for a 2026 Ford Escape in the amount of $29,832.50.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous. The fourth bid is Bid Number 26-04FM for one full-size high-roof cargo van with accessories. And I would entertain a motion to award that to Fremont Motors out of Lander for a 2026 Promaster cargo van in the amount of $59,724.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries unanimously. And finally, the fifth bid is Bid Number 26-05RB for four three-quarter ton four-door crew cab, four-wheel-drive gas engine pickups. And I would entertain a motion to award that bid to Fremont Motors out of Lander for four 2026 2500 Tradesman Crew Cab pickups in the total amount of $191,692.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion on that one? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous.
Thank you.
Kept the reputation going forward, Gene. We made up some time there, and we're back on time almost exactly. So we're gonna break for 12 minutes. We will return back here at 10:30 to discuss fire restrictions. So we're gonna break for twelve minutes. We will return back here at ten-thirty to discuss fire restrictions. Well, I would entertain a motion to I guess extend the order that we passed on resolution twenty-twenty-five dash zero-eight dash C C dash zero-four, which was to establish a stage-one fire restriction. Originally, that order was set to expire on September third, two thousand and twenty-five, unless temporarily lifted or reimposed by the B O C C. And we're, we wish to reimpose that with an end date of September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The, um, reached out this morning to the B L M and several other counties surrounding us. They are leaving it open-ended where it just says basically until further notice. And the only one that has a definite date on it is Ashley National Forest and they have a day, end date is of October thirtieth. So just coming to request and ask, see what, which you all would like to, do you want to put an end date on it? Or would you just rather have it open-ended, which can be rescinded at any time? Well, obviously it could be rescinded also with the date, but. Feedback, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. My preference is to just continue to put our next meeting as the end date. It doesn't take but a couple of minutes to address it and that way we stay updated on what the fuel levels are and what the drought condition is.
I'm fine with that. I'm flexible. It's easy enough. I think we can type up a quick amendment and continue to revisit it and hope that the moisture continues.
Hopefully so. And yeah, so I'll get those reports and I will continue to forward those to you all, the moisture levels as they are taken.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that our initial resolution said it expires on this day unless the commission votes to extend it. I don't know that we need to have all new resolutions. Can we just vote to extend until the next meeting date?
Yeah, I think I motion to, um, extend through um, September sixteenth. And you can simply change the date and that would be sufficient.
Okay, so the one we've currently got it ends September third, should be tomorrow. Do you want us to move that to the seventeenth?
Correct, the day after, therefore we can act on it the day before.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Toman.
I'd say take it to the first meeting in October because I don't think it's gonna be drastic changes between now and first part of October.
But, Mr. Chairman, we don't know, which is why I'd like to just address it every couple of weeks.
Okay, well, I would entertain a motion to I guess extend the order that we passed on resolution twenty-twenty-five dash zero-eight dash C C dash zero-four, which was to establish a stage-one fire restriction. Originally, that order was set to expire on September third, two thousand and twenty-five, unless temporarily lifted or re-imposed by the B O C C. And we're, we wish to reimpose that with an end date of September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous.
Thanks, Alan. Appreciate it.
And I don't see Gary. Okay, thank you. The final two items other than the executive session are in regards to our health insurance and benefit summary plans. Now we've got Chris Merrill, who is the Senior Executive of Strategy and Engagement for I M A Corp. We're waiting on Gary to join us, Chris, but appreciate you joining us this morning and he should be up here any minute, so we'll just kind of pause him. Tell him to run.
I was worried about being late, so.
We are right on time, so we always give Gary a hard time that he always over, overspeaks, so I'm a little nervous now.
I will plead the fifth, commissioners.
All right, let's go move us to item number eight, which is a request for the approval of the U M R Health Benefit Summary Plan Description Amendment. Joining us this morning is H R Director Gary McLean. Good morning, Gary.
Morning, county commissioners. It's time again for health insurance, uh, open enrollment, uh, which will be actually in effect in January. We do open enrollment. Right now it's scheduled for the twenty-seventh of October till, uh, the first weekend in November. Um, I have Chris from I M A with us. Um, he's gonna go over a little bit of the plan performance this year. I hate to say this too loudly, but we actually had a good year in the health insurance plan. Around a seventy-eight percent loss ratio, so you probably won't hear that very often. The reason I bring that up is, and I think I discussed this with some of you earlier, that about two years ago, and we had made a decision instead of trying to increase health insurance in the bad years up twelve percent and then zero and then ten and that we would try to hold around a five or six percent increase each year. We went back and looked at, uh, ten years of data and had we done that, we would have been uh, balanced at that. I think that's easier for budgets, especially easier for, uh, component units. Since that time, uh, the investment income ability has gone up. And so if we have a surplus, I work with Mark, uh, County Treasurer, we take that money and invest that with the idea that when we have those years for ten or twelve percent, maybe we can stick with the five or six percent and not have these big swings, which is very difficult for everybody. So, um, with that said, um, our goal today really, and hopefully you had a chance to look at the packets before you, is to, um, set the premiums, um, so that we can do all the communication materials for the premiums this year, get ready to get the system built to do open enrollment in, uh, October. So, uh, Chris, uh, Merrill's with us from I M A and Chris, if you wanna uh, talk with the board a little bit about some of the planned performance stuff that you've seen this year, uh, based on the most current data.
Yes, love to. Um, appreciate being here virtually, commissioners and board. Uh, so for the county, um, it's just some high-level data points that I think are pertinent. First, uh, large claims continue to drive basically all of healthcare in a general sense. They're getting larger and more frequent. It's not that your doctor's making more money on a, you know, your, your pediatrician's making more from last year to this year. It is we've got claims that are five million dollars, ten million dollars. The county has one right now that has the potential to be extremely expensive. Uh, it's, it's an incident that just happened and so we'll keep an eye on that, but medical trend or medical inflation across the various carriers is averaging somewhere between eleven and fifteen or sixteen percent uh, for a given period of two thousand and twenty-six. And so given our five percent proposal, uh, the county's done really well, as Gary mentioned. Um, some things to note, membership is down from a high of six years ago. We had a, just over a thousand members and now we're down to about eight hundred and fifty. From last year, uh, employee count is down by eleven. That's pertinent in that the bigger you are, the less the variations matter. So the point that Gary referenced of the swings, the smaller you are, the, the higher that swing potential and the more impactful. The biggest thing helping us this year on our plan performance, Gary mentioned our loss ratio, which is directly impacts what we would propose for two thousand and twenty-six, is this year so far through June, which is the latest data that we've got at this point, uh, large claims and large claims are anything over fifty thousand. We have three where last year for all of two thousand and twenty-four, we had fifteen. Uh, those are not linear by any stretch, but you know, we don't expect any scenario right now where we'd go from three to fifteen over the next um, five, six, seven months. The average of those is lower as well, and so that's really what's driven the planned performance being as good as it is. We do have, as you all know, a level that if, if we exceed, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on any given claimant, that that is absorbed by the reinsurance that we'll talk about in a future meeting. Those don't come out until closer to the end of September, first of October. Um, but because our large claims are low, uh, things have gone better. Now we do expect through the end of the year, a run-up as people hit their deductibles. They become less cognizant or concerned about the healthcare money that they might be spending. So we do expect that loss ratio to go up some. Um, any questions on that high-level component? Otherwise, we'll move into kind of some things that we've looked at and, and moving forward.
I just had one for you, Chris. Did you mention that last year there was around a thousand participants and this year it's down to eight fifty? Is that what you said?
No, six years ago was our high-water mark, a thousand forty-five. Last year, we're down eleven employees and about fifteen belly buttons or members, so not as big a move from year over year. Um, but just from the high-water mark where we were six years ago, just looking at what we have.
And that's kind of been consistent, couple here, a couple there, as that's come so also when you have vacant positions, keep in mind that vacant positions, even though we budget them, are not enrolled in the system. So when we have vacant positions, those will bring that number down also, but yeah, the, we have lower numbers overall. And just, I think, just to reiterate what Chris said, because it's really important. Um, and we've talked about this before about trying to explore the possibility of even larger groups by partnering with cities or hospital or others. Obviously, there's, it's more complicated, but, but as you get high numbers, uh, you don't get as much, um, fluctuation variation in the plan. And so you can still have high claims, but overall you have premiums that offset that, so you end up with less variation. It gets to be more predictable, uh, with larger groups. So doesn't necessarily make it more, uh, less expensive, but it does make it more predictable. And, um, we're, you know, kind of right on that, that limit right now. Uh, so I think, I think that's really important, uh, to know going forward. The other thing which Chris uh, didn't address a whole lot is we've done some things over the last three years, particularly with prescription drugs, uh, trying to be creative because of the significant expense in uh, some of the drugs that are coming out. Some of those involve specialty pharmacy through Smith, which we changed to a number of years ago. That's really paid off. We've seen that benefit financially and then also in sourcing through I M A, some drugs that required, uh, finding specialty locations from them, which they've been doing uh, through that, through their organization to help us keep those costs low. So on really high claimants, that's been very, very beneficial, uh, for the plan. Uh, and until something's done nationally with respect to pharmacy prices, we're gonna have to continue to look at those kind of creative solutions because they keep rolling out more and more and more expensive, uh, pharmaceuticals. Just wanted to add those two things. But any other questions?
Doesn't look like it.
Um, just a couple of other points, things we've evaluated. So we did have Wyoming Blue Cross Blue Shield approach us and say they wanted to evaluate them as an option for the county. Uh, we're open, we're, you know, agnostic or independent in that regard. We did evaluate, there's really no, um, there was no cost impact and we did not see that there would be much of a provider, um, increase. And so the benefit analysis was the change management required to implement that wasn't worth it at this juncture unless there's some other, you know, overarching writing, driving thing. And so um, every once in a while, every couple of years, we'll evaluate, are we in the right place? Um, Gary mentioned prescriptions. We have a, a third party, what's called Pharmacy Benefit Manager. We do evaluate that on a regular basis. Right now, as Gary mentioned, they're doing incredibly well. Um, in regards to prescriptions, prescriptions is the fastest-growing area. I mentioned that medical trend, prescription trend is pushing up to fifteen, twenty percent potentially on how you look at it. Uh, we're doing amazing things. They're just really, really, really expensive. And so as Gary mentioned, we, we implemented a, a five percent measured increase every year to help offset the bad years so that we don't have, you know, years where we need a budget amendment. Uh, we would propose that for moving forward, maintaining that five percent increase. That was what we had proposed to the That was what we had proposed to the component units in May. Um, could we go lower? We could, but then it, it creates, puts us on that roller coaster, which has proven to be um, hard on the budget, especially for the component units. And so, uh, dental's gonna go up the same five percent and then vision, we're going to remain flat. And so I believe you all have the, um, information on those premiums that was, uh, submitted prior. Um, unless you have other questions for me, I think those are the highlights as far as the plan performance and where we're looking to move, uh, for twenty twenty-six.
Even though we don't get the stop-loss, final stop-loss cost until October, it's not a significant part of the overall plan spend. Uh, we don't see regardless of what it is impacting, uh, the premium amounts, so. By getting the premium set, it allows us to coordinate and communicate with component units, retirees. Um, it allows us to, uh, get the information out, build the enrollment system. For those of you that have done it, um, it's one of the things, we're probably one of the few entities in the whole county, private or public, that has enrollment system where we can handle enrollment from other entities. So, we have ten separate legal entities in there that we do enrollment, that's ten separate payrolls. Uh, and that's the tool that really allows us to do that. Um, otherwise it'd be really simple, we just do it out of our payroll. But the enrollment system allows us to maintain the billing, the contributions for ten separate enrollment systems. So, anyway, but that has to be built and then, um, I'll be bugging you up until the first of November. Make sure you guys get in and get your enrollment taken care of, so.
Very good, appreciate that. Just for clarity, we've obviously got the proposed health insurance rates that reflect that change. Also is the amendment one? Can you speak to that? I, I mean, it, it shows in your chart amended medical schedule benefits for diff- different plans to revise the following and it lists rates there, but is that separate from what you're talking here with the proposed rates? Or is it all inclusive?
Yeah, so obviously there's different plans, essentially different deductibles. So, I think you had, um, you know, an HRA at one time, that'll have a separate rate, you'll have the fifteen hundred thousand dollar plan. And then you also have rates, um, that will apply to the retirees also, that are still on the plan.
Okay.
So those will just be five percent for the, the health part, five percent for the, uh, dental part, no change of the vision. And, and so.
Okay, I just wasn't sure, cause we need to approve amendment one, but also approve the proposed rates.
That's right.
They're separate, okay. Questions, comments, commissioners? Well, a good year is always welcome, especially in a difficult budget year, so thankful for that. Um, if there's no questions, commissioners, I'd entertain a motion to approve amendment one. Well, hang on, let me back up Gary, so that is effective September first, it says, whereas the health insurance rates are for the calendar year of twenty twenty-six. Am I looking at that wrong?
I didn't bring my copy here.
Gary, there's a proposal on there that's asking about an SPD amendment that I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, so we have two, two issues here. So the first, the first, uh, amendment is to the health insurance plan description. And this is largely the issue that we've been discussing about, so that we could get, um, the providers for mental health um, who have individual practices, um, that, um, we can get them reimbursed at the same levels if they're in network. So as you probably know, one of the challenges we've had is there's individuals that have for their children or themselves mental health providers who are not in a network because they're like one-person providers or two people, very small, uh, providers. And we want to encourage people to get the treatment they need, but those people are not in the network. So, and, and part of the reason they're not in the network is just because they're small. So, what we agreed to do, uh, which doesn't create any different, we just treat them in-network. So that if their provider wants to charge more, they can charge more, but at least it'll be covered the same as an in-network provider. Um, and I think that's a really important, um, component, uh, in rural healthcare because there are only so many, uh, places to get that and there's lots of people who do, who provide services, uh, from a, from a small um, one or two-person, um, thing. So this is, I think, a good solution to that, it's not really changing the current practice, it's just saying that we're going to pay the same amount um, if you're in the area, um, as a, as a, uh, network provider. So that's, that's the amendment component and then you have the fee schedules, so apologies for the confusion on that.
Okay. Questions on the amendment, commissioners? It's not. I'll entertain a motion to approve the UMR Health Benefit Summary Plan Description Amendment as presented and in your packet. So, motion by Commissioner Richards, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries unanimously. So now we are on to the request for the approval of the two thousand twenty-six health insurance plan. Is there any questions, follow-up on the proposed health insurance rates as discussed? Not to entertain a motion to approve the Sweetwater County Proposed Health Insurance Rates for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-six and authorize the chairman to sign. Motion by Commissioner Richards, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter, any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks Gary.
Thank you. To be hunting, make sure you, uh, put open enrollment on your calendar in October, so. I had Chase Taylor for like a week last year, I think, so we got him done, thank you.
Thank you, well.
Thanks, um, it looks like that will conclude the regular business this morning, commissioners. We did amend the agenda at the very beginning to include an executive session to discuss real estate. Uh, Gene, if you're listening, we'll do that in the Castle Rock room. And at this time, I'd enter, I'm not sure, by the way, if action will be taken at this point. But I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss real estate. Motion by Commissioner Richards, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toman, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay, we're now in executive.